In order, we had the invocation by Commissioner Newsom.
Shall we pray? Father God, we come to you tonight, we beseech you, ask you to bless us and honor us with your presence tonight as we do our best to interpret and, and help guide our community. We'd also ask that tonight, think about all those who we just honored with Veterans Day, those that are serving our nation. Across the world, in keeping us safe tonight, we ask blessings, special blessings on them. And just be with us and guide us. Lord, we ask these things in your name. Amen.
Commissioner Mashell?
Here.
Commissioner Thorne? Commissioner Art?
Here.
Commissioner Max?
Here.
Commissioner Jordan?
Here.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Here.
Commissioner Skeen?
Here.
Commissioner Newsom?
Here.
Is there one hand opportunity to review the minutes, and if so, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. Commissioner Newsom?
Aye.
Commissioner Jordan?
Aye.
Commissioner Art?
Aye.
Commissioner Max?
Aye.
Commissioner Mashell?
Aye.
Commissioner Skeen?
Aye.
All right, first order of business is PL 1930, Wilkins C2 rezoning. Request for a rezoning map amendment of five acres from AR to C2. The subject property is located on the north side of Christopher Lane, east side of Highway 51. George Reedy representing owner. Ms. Cardozo, please present the planning staff report and comments.
Yes, sir. This is-
I need to recuse myself on this one.
Yes, sir. Watched a step here, I did. All right, this is PL 1930. The request is a zoning map amendment located at the intersection of Christopher Lane and Highway 51, on the north side of Christopher Lane, east of Highway 51. George Reedy is here tonight representing the owner of the properties. The request is to rezone the property from the current designation of AR agricultural residential to C2 highway commercial. The future land use map and our general development plan identifies this area to be proposed as activity commercial master plan. Generally, a commercially zoned area would be in conformance with a comprehensive plan. I did propose or include the allowable uses that are in C2. As this is a straight zoning, all the uses would be dictated by the C2 district, and those are included in your staff report. For the record tonight, I'll read the three approval or denial criteria for the record. How this proposed amendment would conform to the general development plan. Why the existing zoning district classification of the property in question is inappropriate or improper. And major economic, physical, or social changes, if any, have occurred in the vicinity of the property in question that were not anticipated by the general development plan and have substantially altered the basic character of the area, which make the proposed amendment of the zoning district map appropriate. And the applicant provided responses to each of those questions, and that's located in your staff report. If approved or denied tonight, this recommendation from y'all will be heard next Tuesday, November 18th, at the Board of Alderman meeting. I did provide proposed motions to approve, deny, or table in your staff report. And in the staff report, I've included a surrounding zoning map, and I've highlighted the two parcels that are in question here tonight. This was included just for, to speed up the agenda, but there are two parcels proposed to be rezoned, and both those legal descriptions are in your staff report. But if you see fit, we can consider these individually or as one. But they are highlighted on your staff report here. A total of five acres, roughly three and roughly two acres apiece, one fronting Highway 51, one fronting Christopher Lane. I also included the legal descriptions and an aerial map to give you an idea of what's surrounding it. This is just north of the Entergy site on Highway 51. The applicant's here tonight, Mr. George Reedy, and I'm available if you've got any questions.
Better have him to question, Mr. Cardozo. All right, would applicant please come forward and state your name and address in its entirety?
George Reedy. Office address, 175 East Commerce, Hernando, Mississippi. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. We didn't have a courtroom last time, so I didn't get proceed, but I had nice, pretty maps just in case Austin didn't make it again, but here we are, so that was all wasted effort. Sorry about that, but I'm here making the presentation for Pleasant Hill Investments, which is Cal Wilkins', as of course, most of you, I'm sure, know Mr. Wilkins. Has been a valuable member of the community all of his life and has done several things in the county. To address the three points that need to be addressed, how is a proposed amendment conforming to the general development plan as Mr. Cardozo stated to you, it is in compliance with the future plan and the comprehensive plan for the city. All this areas is designated to be commercial, of a commercial nature, especially given that the now designated and planned intersection exit off Highway 55 at Star Landing Road that's coming, which will be on the very north end. You can see the, this little purple, the little next zoning above on the zoning map, if you'll see that property there. That's the lighter purple goes up to the Star Landing Road where the new intersection is going to be. I'm sure everybody's aware of the surroundings up there, but most importantly, it does comply with the plan that the city has already adopted is what is going to be the future development in that area. Why is the existing zoning district classification in question inappropriate or improper? Is the standard legal response to that, clearly, there's been a complete change, a total change in the neighborhood since everything was A or AR up in that area years ago. All the properties surround the subject parcel, a must of the property has been already been changed to a C designation. Specifically, the Entergy, the big Entergy headquarters is on the very south side and touches the larger parcel that we are requesting that you rezone tonight. And then the section, the little two acre piece that is on, in front's Highway 51, already has a commercial operation, two commercial operations on that lot on its immediately north side, one of them being hair salon, the other one being welding shop. I believe that's a welding shop operating in that building.
It is.
The economic and physical or social changes have occurred, there, again, there's been a complete change in the neighborhood up there. The majority of the surrounding area has been designated as some form of C zoning, as I've already stated, and you can see from the map up there, and it is in the general plan. It's what the city itself desires for the development in that area. And as to the fourth one, which gets left out sometimes of the public need, we submit that there is a public need for this because there's not any C2s of very small plots. Most of the C2 that's around there is either already owned or built on, or it's on larger plots. So we do feel like that there's a need for small plots, for small businesses, that Hernando decides is desirable to come into the area. And I can point out, as Austin has said, this is just for the straight zoning, so the planning department and this commission and the city itself, obviously, will have the the final say of any design of the actual businesses that come in there. I'm happy to answer any questions, if anybody has any questions.
I have more of a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, I see that a lot of the area has been changed to C2, but have you taken into account the six properties that touch these properties that are still AR and in fact have homes on them?
Yes, ma'am, what you'll see on the corner there, that's the Christopher family, but because most of this land is, that's still had owned up there, the Christopher family. You'll see at the corner, there's a house that is already zoned commercial, has been for a long time. And then, if you don't mind, can I walk over to the screen?
Sure.
This, I believe this piece right here. I grew up here, and that's been commercial, in reality, been commercial my whole life, of Mr. Frank Christopher. Anybody that sold or dying is going to know this, but Mr. Frank Christopher had a business operation there, and some of his family's here, and they can make statements about it if they would desire, but I mean, that was a business operation until he decided to retire, or even, I think, maybe until he even passed away.
Right, but it's currently a home?
There's a house on it, but it's the commercial building is still there.
Okay.
I think so.
We have two houses there now, it's, it's two houses there, as he talking about. But he said on the property, my house is a.
I'll give you your chance to come up and square that way. What about the other parcel that the house is on?
Which, which one, Mr. Chairman?
In the back.
One next, right there. Above that, right there.
Yeah, that's one of the Christopher family houses. This is already zoned C2 right here.
And I think that's what Commissioner Art was talking about, is what about that middle one that, that?
Yes, sir, that's, there's a residence there, that's part of the Christopher family that still lives on the property. But again, that's all in the area that the city has already decided is going to eventually be commercial, C2.
Other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Anyone in support or against this item, please come forward and state your name and address in its entirety.
My name is Diana Bell. I live on, address is 2600 Highway 51. In question to what he's saying, I just don't want to be put in a zone where my property is, is like kind of landlocked with residence. I mean, commercial here, commercial here, and I'm just in the middle, and nobody's really telling us anything. He says that it's not going to be that, but you can't say that. So, right where he's saying this, this is, it used to be called Frank James Place, this little tavern. And right behind there is my grandfather's home. I am to the left of there, it's kind of right in front of the electrical company now. Used to be the paving company. My house is right in front of that, and it's on 51. So, I'm not sure what he's doing. It's just every time we turn around, somebody's trying to do something, and they try to make it sound like that's not what they're doing.
So your home is on, on that top one?
Yes.
Right here?
It's right where he's saying he wants to, on this side. It's right next to where he tried to make the, the commercial. It used to be my uncle's land, but I'm assuming he sold it to the man. We didn't know that, but he sold it. And then my house, my land is right next to his. Just an acre and a half.
I think what she's describing, she's just to the south of that property.
You said 2400?
It's 2600.
2600, I'm sorry.
This is half, 2400.
2400 is, is the half.
Okay.
Got you.
Just to the north of her home.
Yes, sir.
As he described, next to that trailer repair welding place.
Mm-hmm.
The other one is behind it.
Yes, sir.
What do you anticipate being there someday, more residential?
At this point, we knew that they eventually would try to buy us out, but nobody's knocked on that door, tell us anything. They're just, whatever he's bought, he's trying to make it commercial. And to me, that seem like we'll be locked into whatever they want to do. And at this age, you know, they would have to buy us out. You know, I'm 67, so my husband's 73. We don't want to be trying to start, start buying, trying to pay for a new home. They would have to give us whatever the house is worth plus to make sure we could be comfortable somewhere else. But no one's never knocked on the door and said, they offer this or offer that, you know. They're just making sure they go around us and, and do whatever they need to do before anything happens.
But I've been going back to that, I mean, you didn't anticipate that being, remaining residential forever, I'm assuming.
Well, at this point, I really couldn't say I anticipated, but I could see that the area is changing. But, you know, I knew that they were supposed to be doing the highway, bringing it through, but, you know, still, you're supposed to try to tell people what's going on. We just came here, we, we still don't know what they're going to do. We have no idea.
I don't think we do either, they're just asking for a rezoning.
I know.
Just any, just, just so you know, it's anything in C2 they can put there, and there, there's a list of things that are in C2.
That's what scares me.
And you can also, and there's also conditional uses, which means they have to come to the city and say, hey, can we have permission to put this on, on that before? And there's a list of stuff that's in.
But what, what grounds would we have at that point to say yes or no? Because it's going to be their land. That's my, Dylan. What options are we going to have?
I mean, if they, if they put something in that is in that list, in C2, then they don't have to come back to the city to get a.
I know. It's a wrap.
And, and I guess the rea, one of the reasons I was asking that is because, I mean, the city's master plan, general development idea, anticipates this being commercial, right there. This is, this is in.
Well, they kind of like told us that if it goes, that they will come and ask to buy you out or something. But like I said, nobody's never came to offer anything or say anything, so we'll have some idea of what they were trying to do. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else in support against this item?
Wayone Chambers, 400 Christopher Lane is the address. Pretty much what she was stating, we're just trying to get a, an idea of exactly what are the plannings for that. Because there is still a house, my mother's house is at 400 Christopher Lane, which is right next to one of the 3.7 acres that he's trying to get rezoned. So we're right next door to it. So we just want to know exactly what are the plans, how is that going to?
Is that the house that's on the corner?
Yes. That's already a C2.
That's already C2.
But a resident home is there.
Right.
Yeah, they allowed the resident home there.
You'd have to talk to Mr. Reedy to get it out.
I don't, yeah, I don't think they, I just think they're just trying to rezone it for.
Yeah, and he did it, he explained it to us, he said that. So will, will we have an option to see the planning?
I mean, they may not, they may not be the ones to develop it. It could be, you know, the current, the current owner that's requesting the rezoning may not do anything with the property. It could be five years, 10 years, it could be so, it could be sold to.
But whenever there's development planning to take place, will we have option to see the planning of that?
Well, what happened is they are going to, if it's within that C2, it's, or there's some different items that it could be. And if it fits into that criteria, then you can come and when they present what they want to do, kind of like you're doing now and say, we think this, this, this. But if it's in, that, it's going to have to be within that C2, 42 different items, it could be.
Okay.
And that's how you would find out, unless they came and talked to you and tried to make sure you understand what they're doing, agree with what they're doing or something like that, but it'd be totally up to the person who's going to do the development of that property.
Okay.
Can we give a list of the 42 items?
I was going to, I was going to recommend that, because we get her that list.
Was it 42?
Yes. Ms. Chambers, do you have, do you have a list of that? Do you know with that? Okay, let's, let me definitely.
Austin can get you a list. And you can, you can look over the items, but probably the best thing to do is.
Can we give her Skeen's?
Yeah, that's fine.
If you see an item in there that you're like, I really don't want to live next to that, that's when you come and say, hey, can you, can you remove this item?
Okay.
Kristen's good.
Here is the list of permitted, you'll see some are permitted, they're used by right, and then the conditional uses are what they discuss, there's a.
The conditional uses would have to come before the board to be approved, and they add, like, say you didn't want contractor storage, you say, hey, can you add that to the conditional use, and then they would have to come and get permission from the city, and then you could say, I really don't want that.
Okay. And just for the record, we're not against the zoning, we just wanted to get a clear understanding of exactly what was going to take place and how that would impact us.
Sure.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Anyone else in support or against this item? Want to rebuttal?
Yes, sir, I, I don't know if there's any need for rebuttal, really, because as Ms. Chambers said, because I've been speaking with her, they're not really against it. In fact, at some point, somebody in the family had asked about, could they do something in Mr. Frank's old place up there? Suspect that they can historically. So, and, but I just would point out again, it's just in the master plan. And it's already been decided by the city that it's in the city father's desires that that would all be C2 or commercial, because it's M1 just south, and it's commercial all around it, and C4 to the north of it. And all these properties have had, that's Billy Haynes' old headquarters over there, which was a paving business with the big trucks coming in and out, doing the paving for years and years and years. So it's not really anything that would be a change to them or something that they would be unexpected about. It just would be the C2s on the lots around them, which is, I mean, I don't live next door to the C2, and they, they might find something on the list that they don't care about, but that's a pretty restricted commercial. So it's not many things that most people would be offended about. It certainly wouldn't be out of character for that neighborhood up there. And I would point out, and I think there's some misunderstanding, Ms. Bell, that was here up first. Nobody's taking, and everybody on this board knows that, nobody's taking anything from them. It's not about any, any access, it doesn't change anything about legal access to your property, or your ownership of the property, or what you can do with your property. In fact, it enhances the value of their property, because it's more commercial around them. And I think that family has acknowledged that they know that it's going commercial, they don't really object to us doing this. This actually will help the value of their houses, and if they, if Ms. Bell wants somebody to come buy her out, which she's, somebody will at some point offer them enough money that they're interested in selling out too. The fact that these have been changed to C2 next to them helps that. That's going to raise the value, that's going to put more money in her pocket. So, again, we were here last time and continued to this time, and I just would ask that the, the commission go ahead and approve this request for rezoning and send it on to the city board. Any questions? Thank you.
So, I, just one question, so you're, he, you're just trying to combine it so it's one, one total, one bigger lot?
No, sir, it still would be two, we just did it as convenience, talking with Austin, the planning commission, so it's two different pieces of property. Both over in one presentation, but it's two different pieces of property. We're not making it one big property, no.
They don't even connect, yeah.
They do not connect. There's other property in between them.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
How long has this comprehensive plan been in place?
The existing plan?
That, that they're talking about, that includes this being?
25 years, I believe.
Okay, how long, how long have y'all lived in that, how long have y'all lived there?
About 15 years.
Okay. I, I'm, I'm just putting that out there, just, just so people understand that they've lived in here for before that comprehensive plan was in place, and so, just, I don't have any problem with, with the rezoning, they, and clearly, they don't, but I just want people to understand that they lived there for longer than this comprehensive plan.
All right, is there a motion to approve, deny, or table this item?
I'd like to make a motion to approve, I'd like to ask that we grant the request of zoning change on that subject property located on the north side of Christopher Lane, east of Highway 51, as presented by Mr. Reedy, representing Mr. Wilkins.
Does that second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Newsom?
Aye.
Commissioner Jordan?
Aye.
Commissioner Art?
Nay.
Commissioner Max?
Aye.
Commissioner Mashell?
Nay.
Motion to approve this item passes. And this is just a, a recommendation. Notice is going to the, if you want to appeal, you can go to the Board of Alderman within 10 days for the notice to.
Yeah, this is going to the board. This is going straight to the board, on the 18th.
Next Tuesday.
Yes, sir.
Y'all understand that it'll be, it'll go before the Board of Alderman next Tuesday.
All right, the next item is PL 1931, Miles Minor Subdivision. Request final plat approval to combine three lots into one lot of 5.468 acres. The subject property is located on the west side of Memphis Street, south of Green Tea Road. Kevin Miles, on Ms. Cardozo, please present the planning commission report and comment.
No, he actually needs to recuse on this as well. Yes, sir, just as we mentioned, just for the record, Commissioner Skeen has recused himself on this one as well. This is PL 1931, Miles Minor Subdivision. The request is for final plat approval to combine three lots on the west side of Memphis Street, south of Green Tea Road. Kevin Miles is representing the application. The property is zoned agricultural, and the total acreage is 5.468 acres, so the three lots would be combined into one of 5.468, and they're all under common ownership. I've included the bulk requirements in your staff. I've included the bulk requirements in your staff report and all structures meter exceed these bulk requirements as well as the lot size. And on the plat, you can see there's an existing ingress egress easement on the south side of the parcel that provides access to the parcel in the back, the will height parcel. Um, it's a pretty old easement, so it's an existing easement. It's, nothing's proposed to change with that. But what he's asking is the three lots in and around three forty-three Old Highway fifty-one South are, uh, proposed to be combined. And so the applicant's here tonight. I'm available if you've got any questions.
Any question, Mr. Caduce? All right, would applicant please come forward and state your name and address in its entirety?
I'm Larry, Larry Miles. Kevin is my son. He couldn't make it. But, uh, three forty-three Old Highway fifty-one, we had a home site and two separate acres of land. So we just want to consolidate those.
Any questions for that? Thank you. Anyone in support against this item? Is there a motion to approve, deny, or table this item?
I make a motion to grant final plat approval from Miles Minor Subdivision, one lot of five point four six eight acres located on the west side of Memphis Street, south of Green Tea Road, based upon the finding that the submitted plat generally conforms with the requirements of the city's code ordinances, subject to the following conditions.
It's just the one.
All right, does that second?
Second. You can have it.
Commissioner Newsom?
Aye.
Commissioner Jordan?
Aye.
Commissioner Hart?
Aye.
Commissioner Max?
Aye.
Commissioner Mashell?
Aye.
Motion to approve this item passes.
It's nice to get a request to increase a lot size instead of decrease a lot size.
And this will go before the Board of Alderman next Tuesday night as well.
Okay.
Give me a dirty roof next time, I'll get it. Watch step.
Next item is PL nineteen forty-one, Crestview Phase One Final Plat. Request for final plat approval of Crestview Phase One Residential Subdivision, consisting of a hundred twenty-eight family, single resident, I mean, single family resident lots and two common open spaces on P U D, located on the west side of Keeland Drive, south of Mylum Lane. Chance Walker, representing on them. Mr. Caduce, present the planning commission reporting comments.
Yes, sir, this is PL nineteen forty-one. The request is for the final plat approval of Crest G Phase One. This is on the west side of Keeland, south of Mylum, um, in section eight, township three, range seven. Ben Smith's here work, uh, representing the application, um, for Smith Walker Engineering. Uh, the current phase is proposed to have twenty-eight single-family lots and two common open space lots along the creek. Uh, and the existing zoning is P U D. Uh, the P U D was zoned, uh, and approved by the Board of Alderman on May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. And so accordance with our subdivision regulations, that P U D approval served as our preliminary plat and authorized construction to continue. It was a contentious rezoning, and so at that rezoning, the developer offered conditions of approval and covenants at the time of the P U D submittal. And so, uh, for clarification, I've included all those, um, in your staff report and recommended that we include that as a condition of approval so that everything the developer offered originally is tied to the plat with minimum home sizes, architectural features, um, uh, and other covenants. It's, it's pretty extensive, but I've included all that in your staff report. And condition number eleven in the, uh, proposed motion includes that those being included with the final plat to confirm that it is submitted to us in the same way. Um, the total acreage is eighteen point three nine acres. That's, like I said, twenty-eight single-family lots and two common open space lots. The bulk requirements and the setbacks in the staff report were what were listed in the P U D approval back in twenty twenty-four. And this does substantially conform to that of the preliminary submittal. And so in accordance with our subdivision regs, um, it does substantially conform. Um, as with the last application, this will be heard Tuesday night, November eighteenth, uh, for y'all's recommendation to them. And one through ten on the, um, recommended conditions that we've included are, covers all of our letter of credits that we'll hold to make sure the development's finished the correct way. And as I mentioned, number eleven is the, are those voluntary conditions they offered. And applicants agreed to match them exactly what was originally submitted. Um, Mr. Ben's here tonight representing the application, and I'm available if you've got any questions.
Any question, Mr. Caduce? All right, would applicant please come forward and state your name and address in its entirety?
Uh, thank you, Chairman and Board. I'm Ben Smith, uh, twenty-seven hundred Stone Brook in Nesbit. Glad to present this to you. This is, uh, the final plat for twenty-eight single-family homes, uh, that we anticipate the price of those homes will be, um, over three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars each. Uh, be a, uh, good addition to, uh, Hernando. But we're asking for final approval. The asphalt is down, uh, the power is in. We've got clearance from the city engineering department, and we would love to have your recommendation to approve, uh, twenty-eight lots as the first phase of the subdivision. I'll answer any question you may have. It's a curb and gutter subdivision with sidewalks. So it's, um.
Are you opposed to the conditions that he, that were recommended?
No. As a matter of fact, I think we've, I think we initially agreed to two thousand square feet and it's now twenty-four hundred square feet minimum heated area. I can, I don't remember.
It's twenty-four heated?
Twenty-four, it's twenty-four hundred square feet heated minimum.
And, and I, I had had the question before about, there's, I guess, a paragraph of caption at the top of the restrictive covenants, but those will be the restrictive covenants that will be, they're not a draft. That, that will be the restrictive covenants that are included and were proven today.
I didn't understand.
Well, in here, you may not. At the top of them, there was a paragraph that just says it's a draft involuntary, and that's what, that's why I had some confusion earlier. Yeah. I just don't want there to be any confusion about what we're proving.
It's the ones we sent to Chance late last week.
Yeah, this is, this is what, yes, we agreed on that.
Yeah, and, and yeah, it just, make sure that, I don't think that paragraph's, the paragraphs are not a part of the covenants, correct? I mean, that's just a, an introduction statement, I think.
Any other question for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone in support against this item, please come forward and state your name and address?
I really just had a couple of questions. My name is Mike Duckworth. I live at twelve fifteen Mylum Lane, which backs up on the north side of one of those lots there. Is it possible for me to get a copy of this? And, um, when we went through the, the original, uh, I guess, trying to get the whole thing started, this is the rezoning, uh, we were adamant that the entrance coming in on Mylum not be a construction entrance. And as of today, it's not, but at some point, that's going to open up. Any way we can determine when that would happen? You know, there's, there's a construction entrance out through the, back through the woods out to McEnville right now, and that's what they've used. But I'm just concerned as it gets closer to, I guess, this thing moving forward to construction, is that going to remain that way?
Yes, sir, that's the plan, is to keep all construction traffic on that internal drive, concrete trucks and, and the like. Uh, now, when the residents live in there, that's when it'll have to open for the residents to get.
Oh, I understand that, I understand that, yeah. Is it possible that we could have, you know, you see some of these subdivisions that have signs up that says, no construction entrance, that kind of thing? Is it possible to get something like that up?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
That'd be, that would be great. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Uh, probably twenty-five.
Because they already are going through it.
My name is Pam Duckworth, and I'm his wife, and we live at twelve fifteen Mylum Lane, on the corner, right where that single tree where it's going straight through. And all summer long, we've been monitoring, you know, we watch, we've watched it all summer long as they've, um, come in and, you know, taken the trees down and all that. The traffic, um, coming through that curve, the, um, construction traffic that's in there right now already go an extremely high speed around that little cove that's going to be right there at that stop sign. So I'm just concerned about the traffic and also the speed limit that's going to come down single tree right bet, right between our houses, because we have children that live in both of those houses right there on that corner. And if the traffic is not monitored and the speed limit is not lowered to where it's a very low speed limit and it's not monitored often, there's going to be some problems there because, like I said, there are children out there playing and there are animals, there's people walking their dogs. And I'm just concerned about all of that speed and all of that traffic coming through that new intersection. And the stop sign is already way up here, the new stop sign is here. So once they go through that intersection, it's going to be open floor for them. So that, that's my main concern.
If, if there are no signs posted, the speed limit is twenty-five.
There are no signs there now. There's a new stop sign that, where the new road intersects going the other way. There's a new sign, but it's way on up.
I've talked about speed limit signs. If there are no stop, if there are no speed limit signs, the speed limit is automatically twenty-five miles an hour within the city of Hernando. If you need to have it lowered, you have issues, you need to contact the Board of Alderman.
What about bumpers, the bumper stoppers, you know? Because I know some roads have those, but I also have heard that there are laws that, uh, you have to have a special wall or something to get the speed bumps put in those areas like that.
This, this will go before the Board of Alderman next Tuesday, if, if approved, and I anticipate it will be.
Okay.
And at that point, you can address Board of Alderman about it and take those same concerns that you've got to them.
Because our property actually comes right up to the road. And I mean, if you are coming, I mean, if you're back there and there's traffic coming through that intersection and they don't, they don't see you or you don't see them, it's going to be, it's going to be dangerous.
You can tell the police department to.
It's going to be very dangerous.
Thank you.
Anyone else support against this item?
My name is Kristi Galbuck, and I live at twelve fifty-five Mylum Lane. The entrance to the subdivision that is being approved goes in between the Duckworks driveway and my driveway. And we do, we are very concerned about the traffic, um, even getting in and out of our driveway. But, you know, their, their subdivision will have curb and gutters, but the existing subdivision does not. And so, yes, my five-year-old is riding her bike in the street along with about four or five other five-year-olds. So that's just a concern that there's not anywhere else for them to be but the street. There's not a sidewalk, um, for them to stay out of the street. I did want to ask if there is, if the engineering department has approved the gas line. Yeah, they have done the water, they've done the electricity, but the gas has been, there's been a holdup with that. Y'all have dug through my yard for everything that you've done so far for this subdivision, dug up my yard. Um, I'm just wondering if you're going to dig in my yard for the gas as well?
It's through Atmos, and so we have the third party it out. I don't have a great answer for you.
Did they not dig it up?
They usually bore everything for the gas. I just don't know the status of your yard particularly.
Okay. Um, in the signage for the subdivision, do y'all know where that's going to be?
The entrance monument? It'll just be internal street signs as, as far as we're concerned now.
There's not going to be a, like a Crest Viewpoint sign anywhere?
There's not common open space for it, so it'll just be the, the street sign.
And on that, I can't really tell, does it show the green spaces and where those are located on that map?
So the common open space, the green space, I think, is on the, is along the creek behind those homes that link these two along this, this boundary here. It abuts up to a Decru easement as well, so that's that big empty space you see.
Right, okay. Um, also the mailboxes, did we, is that established on there?
So the common open space that we just talked about there, um, the mailbox is either, depending on what the postal service says, on the north side or the south side here for this first phase.
Where is that?
About the culvert, the big box culvert you see in the crossing the creek.
Is it by the bridge?
Yeah, the culvert, big culvert.
Okay, so it's not right at the entrance. I know, I think we'd gotten past that.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be on the internal part of it, by the creek.
Okay. Okay, I guess that's it, my only questions I have. Thank you.
Come on.
Our house backs up to the property line, and they did leave a tree line for us, um, next to our property. We had a couple that came out, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, and they were looking at the lots and, you know, interested in buying them, and we were out in our backyard and we got to talking to them. And he, you know, said something about, well, if I buy this lot that's right behind your house, does that mean that these are my trees? And I told him, I said, well, I don't know. I said, all I know is that they call it the tree line, you know, that separates the, the new, uh, development from our property. And he said, well, if I buy the prop, if I buy the lot, I'm going to cut the trees down. So can somebody explain to me, is that a tree line that cannot be moved? Or can the owner of that new lot come in and cut the trees down?
Was the, on the P U D that was submitted, does it, was there an undisturbed buffer or?
There is on the south side against Thousand Oaks, I know for a fact. I'll have to check on the north side. There is, it's listed on here as a twenty-five foot buffer. I'm not sure if you're.
There is a twenty-five buffer, yeah. They did leave a good, a tree line.
It's on the plat to remain as a, as a non-disturbed.
Behind it, but the guy that wanted to buy it said that if he bought it, he was going to cut the trees down. Can they do that?
If it's within that buffer, they can.
So who, who monitor, who maintains that, that?
As if he just goes and cuts it down?
Yeah, I mean, he can't just come in and, they can't just come in and cut those trees down?
Will he get a, will he get a clearing permit for individual residents?
Technically, I mean, if it's more than a tenth of an acre, you're required to have a grading permit. Now, the enforcement action, I think, is what your question is. I don't know the mechanism that's going to.
Kristen will come take it.
I mean.
You're just going to have to make the city aware if there's a chainsaw out there, I guess.
So he could just come in with a chainsaw one day and just cut them down and not have to have an approval or anything?
He would need, he's not supposed to do it, so we would. I'm sorry?
That, that neighborhood is going to be at an HOA, so they're not going to do that without talking to the HOA.
Okay, well, I just, because he, the guy that's interested in buying that lot has already said, if he buys that lot, he will cut the trees down. And I told him, I said, I don't know that that's, you know.
Send him our way. If you talk to him again, just let him know. It's on the plat as a twenty-five foot buffer.
Okay.
So is that a, so is that considered common open space or is that actually each lot is, is part of each lot?
It's part of each lot. I, I have one on my property where I live, where just like a forty-foot behind my house I'm not really supposed to touch. It's on the plat as such, so. And it's, I don't know the best answer of how we enforce exactly if he goes out there and starts trimming and cutting. So, um.
I was trying not to talk, but here I am. I'm Jake Galbuck. I live at twelve fifty-five Mylum Lane. Chris Lamb, I believe it is. He's been very talkative with me, and I've kind of understood the process since. So he did, in the fifteen or twenty-five foot buffer, cut a lot of trees down from my lot to the one behind me. There's nothing behind me. Whereas her property, there is trees. The reason they took the trees by mine is it was going to be a hindrance because they were literally going to fall. So Chris and I agreed it was okay to take those down in that buffer. Her trees are fine. There, there's nothing, there's not an issue. So it was in our, when we were talking with everybody, that in that buffer zone, that would be left alone, as in, it wouldn't be touched. But during the process, when they were here first time, there was going to be an HOA involved. And I hear back and forth, HOAs can do, can't do. I don't know what they can and can't do. But at least they're going to have to talk to somebody. So that, that's, that's all that was told to us about the buffer zone.
They do have an HOA, and the covenants are in here. We can give you guys a copy if y'all need a copy.
Okay.
But HOAs are very limited in enforcement.
Hmm.
Some of them do great, the ones that are strong, but then there's also, I've been a part of some.
So we don't know who monitors that buffer zone, like?
It's, that's the hard, like Austin said, that's the hard part of dealing with enforcement of it is, you know, who's to say?
you know, who's to say, somebody buys that lot and builds a house, and five years from now, they decide to clear the trees. Who's going to enforce that? If they don't, you know, now technically, they're supposed to pull a permit or something with the city.
Sure, sure.
Has there been instances where people don't?
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
And then once that tree's gone, you can't, it's not like they can replant it.
Okay, is this going to be uploaded on the website?
Sure, you can have my copy if you want to.
Yeah, because I, I don't, I don't know how many properties are going to be behind the house, so. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Anyone else support against this item? All right, is there a motion?
She has some, she does, because she has some, for sure.
I want to, so she mentioned something about sidewalks. Sidewalks are going in this neighborhood, right?
They are.
So it's just going to be like every other neighborhood, where that neighborhood ends, the sidewalks are going to stop? And then, how much is that, Austin, is it like, is there?
I mean, there are no sidewalks at all in Single Tree, it's an old county subdivision, it's open ditch, large lot, and so there were no sidewalks. It'd be a half mile to tie it back to the McInville green line, probably.
That'd be the property owner's responsibility, I would assume.
It'd be us, it'd be the city on the, on her subdivision to install and be on the city.
It would? Oh, really, okay.
And you said every year, there's a, there's an allotted amount of sidewalks that the city does, right?
Yep. Now, that's a pretty major project, I don't want to make any false promises.
No, no, I'm not saying that, but what I'm saying is, is if, I guess, if you ask enough questions, I'm speaking to the residents, if you keep after them, I mean, they paved, someone paved all the way down McInville. That was a pretty big project, so I'm not promising anything, but you'd have to keep after them. I know where you're coming from, I got a, I got a nine-year-old that likes to ride her bike, too, so I understand where you're coming from.
There's a reason that the comprehensive plan is developed, and I know y'all are about to talk about one. And the reason is, the, how you, how we rezoned this as a PUD and we are allowing it to be nestled into an AR community. And that shouldn't have never been done per the comprehensive plan that y'all developed, because it's supposed, it says it should be on a major collector road or a major thoroughfare. Well, this, this community is not in either one of those. So that, that's why they're digging up my yard, and that's why you're tying in a old subdivision with a new subdivision. A subdivision this major, this is just Phase One, and it's a PUD, so I have no idea what the future is going to be. I'm sure there's going to be other entrances at some point, but the, per the comprehensive plan, this, this subdivision should have been connected to McInville at minimum. And they're, they could access a dirt road to get their construction, but they couldn't put an entrance there for some reason. So that's, that's the beef that I have, and that's what I went out there and told that family is, just because they say you're only, these 42 things are the only things that they're going to put on C2, y'all didn't acknowledge the comprehensive plan with the development of this subdivision, because it's not supposed to be where it is. It's not supposed to be nestled inside of a, an old AR residential community. And so you're going to, you're going to have problems with sidewalks and such. If it were connected to McInville, it'd be access to that nice long McInville sidewalk. I mean, I'm sorry, that's just...
All right, is there a motion to approve, deny, or table this item?
I make a motion to grant final plat, plat approval for Crestview Phase One, consisting of 28 single-family residential lots and two common open spaces of 18.39 acres, based upon a finding that the submitted final plat generally conforms to the requirements of the city's codes and ordinance subject to conditions 1 through 11, 11 being that the covenants that are in draft are the final covenants that are being included with the PUD.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Newsom?
Aye.
Commissioner Jordan?
Aye.
Commissioner Art?
Aye.
Commissioner Max?
Aye.
Commissioner Mashal?
Aye.
Commissioner Skeen?
Aye.
Motion to approve this item passes?
All right, and for the comprehensive plan, Bob Barber's plane is delayed out of getting out of Europe, so he's not going to be here. So I'll take, I'll be brief tonight, but I want to pass out the plan to anybody that doesn't have it. Does everybody have a copy now?
I have one.
Okay, we'll get you one. And then Bob will be here with the full presentation next month, or we can have a special call meeting if the schedules allow, but I'll be in touch closer if that happens. Work done, is the short of it, is we've got the draft complete, based on all the feedback from the public surveys, from our in-person meetings. Yeah, sorry, thank you. And the main documents in here, and if, what I'd recommend is if you've got any questions, just call me. We can schedule a meeting to sit down one-on-one and talk through some of the concerns or some questions or anything you don't, you want to see more of or less of. The main parts of the plan that are different from our last one was, is of course, we've updated all the data that goes into it, populations and schools and utilities. But it's a transition from a traditional place type, a traditional land use plan to a place type plan. So it really recommends great design, modern types of planning policies versus just a straight typical zoning like you see. So most of the time, when residential subdivision comes in front of y'all, y'all prefer PUD because it gives design flexibility and really puts itself to the land rather than trying to fit a box. So this plan, in short, really recommends things like that. So a place type of cluster development to really maximize density in certain places and relieve it in others. And so it's not just a, a general land use plan. That's the main takeaway from the plan that is different from our last one. Bob will be here to explain all the data that went into it at our next meeting. But in the meantime, between now and then, just reach out to me, we'll sit down and talk about it if you've got any questions. And then the future land use plan, the place type plan, is pretty small in this. We have a huge copy in our department, and I'll email you a copy so you can kind of see what's recommended for where. So yeah, that's, everybody's got a copy now, I can email you a digital copy. Share with your friends, your family, whoever, we're looking for all the feedback still. I do want to try to get this adopted in front of the board before the new year, so we've got plenty of time. I also don't want to rush it, so if you've got any questions or comments, just, just let me know.
Where's the Chick-fil-A and Costco going?
Million-dollar question.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
All right.
All right, thank you.